Coronavirus informational presentation. So Jill, are you available to take this item?
I am. Good morning, Chair Hall, members of the Board of Supervisors. This is Jill Blake, your Public Health Director. It's my pleasure to introduce Kimberly Parker, Executive Director of the Sierra Nevada Memorial Hospital Foundation, and Dr. Brian Evans, the CEO from Sierra Nevada Memorial Hospital.
Thank you, Jill. This is Dr. Brian Evans. I'm the CEO at Sierra Nevada Memorial Hospital. Can everybody hear me and see me okay?
Yes.
We can.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to give you guys a little bit of a summary of what's been going on over at the hospital in the setting of this COVID-19 pandemic. It's been a very interesting, stressful, challenging time for, I think, everybody, and in particular, folks in healthcare environments like the hospital. So I want everybody to understand kind of what our experience has been, some of the numbers, where we have dealt with issues of PPE that we've all been hearing a lot about in the news. Talk a little bit about supplies, equipment. I want to talk a little bit about projections and how we've handled projections of surge, how we've coordinated with other hospitals as well as with other public health entities, how we're dealing with testing at this point, because I think testing for COVID-19 has been a big focus for everybody in the community. And we've been hearing a lot about that on the news. Talk a little bit about communication, how we've done communication a little bit differently at the hospital as a result of this pandemic, and some of the financials, just in broad terms, in terms of how this has been affecting community hospitals, depending upon their levels. I want to talk a little bit about recovery mode, hopefully what that looks like, just in high-level terms. And that'll be kind of what we'll go over. And I want to make sure there's an opportunity for questions as well, if there's any from the supervisors. So our experience at Sierra Nevada, I think, has differed from other hospitals in other places around the country and other places around the world. We certainly have not seen a huge surge of COVID-19 patients. At this point in time, we've treated just a handful of inpatients who have tested positive for COVID-19. We've done a fair amount of testing of the patients in the emergency department as well as inpatients. We are over 200 tests now at the hospital itself. And yet, we've only seen just a handful of inpatients. So that's been extremely fortunate. There's probably a lot of reasons why that's been the case here in Western Nevada County, which we can kind of go into in a little bit more detail. We focused a lot of our efforts in recent weeks on preparation, coordination, training. We've done some things differently at the hospital that you may be aware of. We postponed elective procedures, elective testing. We are limiting the number of visitors on campus, and we're screening everybody that comes in the door. So the hospital feels and looks a little bit differently than normal times right now and has for a while. I want to talk about PPE a little bit. We, you know, everybody's been seeing on the news various hospitals which have really struggled with supplying themselves adequately with appropriate PPE, which is personal protective equipment, things like gloves and face shields, masks, gowns. And I think we've all seen in New York and other places where they run out or they've had to reuse repeatedly or the same mask for days on end, et cetera. We have not had that experience here, fortunately, and that's mostly because of the low numbers of patients. I would say that hospitals all over are susceptible to shortages of these supplies. It's not like we have any real secret sauce. I think we've done well coordinating with our other system hospitals on this matter. But the supply chain has really been disrupted internationally, and it's been, I think, a challenge for a lot of folks to keep up. And our usage of PPE equipment has increased significantly, especially early on when we didn't have the access to rapid testing for COVID-19, and we had to assume that a large number of patients in our hospital might have it. They subsequently tested negative, but during that interim phase, we were using a lot of the PPE. At this point in time, we're doing pretty well. We've been checking in with our other five sister hospitals in our division every single day, even on the weekends, to make sure that we're clear about what we have in stock, what we can expect, what other hospitals are having. We've done some sharing of resources, and we've certainly worked with the county and the Mohawk to make sure that we are adequately supplied on PPE. We've also received donations of PPE from community members, which has been extremely appreciated and welcome. We've also received donations of things like face shields. We have a company in Nevada County that's making reusable face shields for us, which they just started doing at their own accord. And that's been very well appreciated as well, and a surprising outcome of this. There's other supplies besides PPE that everybody, I think, is tracking, things like hand sanitizer, cleaning products. We actually ran out of hand sanitizer at one point, and then a local company here started to make hand sanitizer for us instead of vodka, they're a vodka distillery, and they started making hand sanitizer. And that was, that was great. Cleaning products actually have been in short supply, so we've had to get pretty creative with that. And we've actually received some from the dollar store, believe it or not. So that's been, that's been good. We're, we're pretty much solid on all those products at this point in time. Some of you might need to move, I think.
Can I interrupt for a second? Someone, somewhere has something being played in the background that's interrupting with Dr. Evans. And I, someone needed to move.
I think we've got it. I think we've got it, Dan. We're dealing with it in the chat. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll go ahead. I'll go ahead and resume again. It's Brian Evans, Sierra Nevada Memorial Hospital. On equipment, you know, one of the, one of the things that's really come up is equipment shortages in places that have been hard hit. And probably the top of that list has been ventilators, and that's been the subject of a lot of discussion and concern, because some, some areas are really predicted to not have enough ventilators, and they've experienced that. And so some, some companies have actually really ramped up the production of ventilators. We're in, we're in good shape on ventilators at Sierra Nevada, based on the projections we were looking at. We have, we have plenty essentially of that. But there's a lot of things on the list of equipment that we look at that the public hasn't really been thinking about or discussing on the media, things like IV pumps and IV modules and, you know, oxygen delivery systems and all kinds of different pieces of equipment. So we have a list of about 20 items that are considered essential equipment for COVID-19 patients that we're tracking, not only at Sierra Nevada, but all six of our divisional hospitals. And we have plans around how to deal with shortages of any of those things. Fortunately, Sierra Nevada is in good shape on every single item of equipment if needed in a surge situation, up to a limit. I mean, there's a limit of how many patients you can take care of, but based on the projections we're seeing, we are in good shape on equipment. Speaking of projections, that's been an interesting item for, for hospitals, trying to sort out how many patients can we expect? And there's a lot of different projection systems out there. I've been following IHME quite a bit, which is out of the University of Washington, which gives ideas about projections for states like, you know, California. They've got a projection for California. But they don't give you individual hospital or, you know, county data and expectations. So we've worked with other statisticians to try to figure out what we might expect here at Sierra Nevada. The projections have varied all over the place. It looks like we are probably, at this point in time, essentially at where we would be expected to be for the peak of our resource utilization, which is not very much. But I think that in an area like this, we need to be very careful, because just a few little things could really change our numbers very dramatically, especially when you think about the nursing homes, skilled nursing facilities, assisted living facilities, other group settings where if coronavirus were to, to become a problem in any of those areas, we could really be inundated with a lot of patients, and it could be difficult to deal with. So I don't think we're out of the woods. And I think the, the projection tools that we've been using have, have limits. So we just don't want to over, overpredict based on those. On coordination, we kind of talked about the coordination. We have ops meetings here at the hospital every single day, specifically to COVID-19. We, we have been in an incident command structure since this began, I believe about over a month ago now. And we also coordinate with a command structure through the division. So that has eight subcommittees on things like equipment and supplies, et cetera. So a lot of ongoing connection with the, the division. On testing, testing has been challenging, I would say, in this area and every area. You know, early on in the phase of this COVID-19 pandemic, there really wasn't good access to laboratory testing for this. We did a drive-through testing process at the hospital to try to facilitate easy testing for public people with, with infection symptoms. But we required a doctor's order for those tests because those tests needed to be tracked. What we found was that the turnaround times were not very good for the initial phase of this pandemic. And it was taking, in some cases, well over a week to get results back on some of those drive-through patients. And then we really shifted where the recommendation from public health was if someone is ill, but they're not so ill that they need to be hospitalized, and it's not going to change their clinical management, then the recommendation for those folks was to simply stay at home and self-shelter and really try to not expose anybody else. And that all made a lot of sense. So I think there's been less testing of those individuals. But we have done quite a bit of testing here at the hospital in the emergency department and inpatients. And I think we're over 200 tests now at this point in time, very few positives. We now do have our own Abbott IQ Analyzer in the hospital, which is a device that can do point-of-care rapid testing, so we can get a result in about a half an hour on a patient in the hospital. What we don't have is an unlimited supply of reagent. And we don't have enough reagent for that device to, to test everybody, to test a lot of outpatients or first responders and that sort of thing. So we're really limited just to inpatients and some ER patients on that Abbott device. So we're still relying on the regional lab that we have in Sacramento, Stockton, and West to some extent. Communication has changed, I think, quite a bit. And actually, this is one area where I think it's really made us better. We're doing more test, more communication with Facebook, with the newspaper, with KNCO, with KBMR, peeps. We're kind of all over the place, because I think people really want to know regular updates about the hospital and what's going on. And so we've really tried to get the word out on what, what's happening and be pretty transparent with folks on what we're experiencing as a hospital. And that's been good, and that's something I think we want to continue, maybe not to quite this degree, but, but certainly going forward. On finances, we haven't really talked about this a lot. I think before I talk about the finances, I'll just say the number one thing that we're thinking about at Sierra Nevada is that this is why we're here. We're here to take care of this community, and we are here for situations where there's a pandemic, and that's, that's our mission, essentially. Right now, because we've canceled elective cases, we've canceled other elective screening tests, et cetera, and we've seen relatively low volumes of patients throughout this COVID-19 pandemic, we've seen a significant financial hit to the hospital as a result of it. It's, you know, it's going to be probably even worse in April, and we're talking about billions of dollars off budget. So we've talked, I've talked previously to the Board of Supervisors about the fact that rural hospitals throughout the United States are really having a tough time financially, and many of them have closed over the last 10 years. We're not in a situation where that's going to happen, but we do have to be very prudent about our finances to make sure this hospital stays strong for generations to come. So as we recover from this, that will be a huge, significant financial challenges, I think, for about every hospital in the country, especially the ones that have really not seen large volumes. So on recovery mode, I think we're coming up with our plans around recovery right now. How are we going to scale back up to do elective cases and, and testing? When does that happen? What are the triggers for that? When do we start to reopen things like rehab services, et cetera? So more to come on that. And I just want to finish by saying thank you to so many people who've helped the hospital throughout this, this pandemic. People have donated items, they've donated food, they've volunteered to help. Scott Lay helped us out with opening some classrooms for our employees' children who needed that. I really appreciate that from him. Ken Cutler's done a great job, GBPD, Chapadae, Western Sierra. People have been really great partners throughout this whole entire thing. Physician volunteers, really, it's been an inspiring time for the hospital and for, for the community, I believe. So with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much, Dr. Evans, for that exhaustive information. Thank you for making yourself available so frequently on the radio, on, you know, weekly calls. And here, we really appreciate it. I think making sure the public is getting information directly from you is very helpful. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Just a comment, Dr. Evans. Yesterday, Jill Blake gave a great presentation on public health and the fact that there's an emergency preparedness plan in effect that they had developed previous, and that there's a great coordination between our public health department and the hospital. And I, I think the public would appreciate to know that that is actually going on and working quite well.
Yeah, I agree. I think that we've had awesome coordination with the county. Jill's done a fantastic job. Kim has been very helpful as well, and of course, Dr. Cutler. And I don't know that that's been the case at every county. I think we have a special relationship with Nevada County here, and, and we, I think this has just solidified that.
Yep. Thank you.
So, thank you. And that was Supervisor Miller. And I'm going to go ask if the other supervisors have questions. And please remember to introduce yourself first so people on the line know who's speaking. So Supervisor Anderson, do you have any questions for Dr. Evans?
Thank you, Chair Hall. This is Supervisor Anderson, District 5. I have a question for Jill Blake, our Director for Public Health. Jill, do we have an update for the Truckee Forest Hospital District?
We can certainly give an update when we get to the public health presentation, if you'd like.
I'd love it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Hook, do you have any questions for Dr. Evans?
Thank you, Supervisor Hook, District 4. No question except for that "thank you." And what a blessing it is that this county has a hospital. There's a lot of places that don't have that. We're very, very fortunate that here and Truckee both have hospitals. So thank you, and we just support everything you're doing for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Supervisor Schofield, do you have questions or comments for Dr. Evans?
Well, a quick comment, Dr. Evans. Supervisor Schofield, District 2. Thank you. Thank you for the reports that you put out. I kind of feel like you, along with our public health people, are really the front line. And while we can get all kinds of state and national, I mean, 24 hours a day, we can get it. I like to know, hey, what's happening right here in Nevada County? And your reports are wonderful. They're essential. One quick question. What, when can we start looking at recovery time? You know, are people, we've had that number 34 for a number of days now, and the first ones were like a month ago. Will we shortly begin showing recovery? Or how long does that take?
Yeah, you know, I think that it's very reassuring that we've had relatively stable numbers, but it has to be taken in the context of we haven't done a huge amount of testing out there, so we don't know exactly how many positives are out there in the community. And then everything also has to be balanced with the risk that we have in a county like this with a lot of elderly people and skilled nursing facilities, where we really need to make sure that the coronavirus stays out of those areas. So I would like to have further discussions about when and how do we recover and start doing some of the elective work with the public health department, actually, because I think we need to partner with them to, to make a good decision about when is the timing right for this.
Brian, or Dr. Supervisor Schofield again. I think you misunderstood me. I, I'm wondering about those 33 active cases. When will we start seeing those go to recovery mode?
Oh, when will the patients themselves recover? Is that what you're asking me?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Well, my suspicion is that a number of them already have recovered. I suspect that some of those patients may still have symptoms, but the fact that they've been a positive number, they're going to, you know, they're always going to have tested positive, and that they'll just be tracked as the total number of positives in the county. But the expectation is that all those positive patients, you know, will, at least hopefully, all of them will recover. I know that there's been one death in the county, and hopefully that will be the only one. But my, my anticipation is that they'll, the rest will recover. I don't know about the timing of that. And hopefully, we're already at the peak of this, and we're going to be on the tail end, but we have to be very, very cautious at this point.
I have one more question for the doctor.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Supervisor Schofield. Supervisor Miller?
Dan Miller, District 3. Dr. Evans, a lot of discussion has been around the possibility of a rebound. What, what are your thoughts?
You know, this is one where I think it's probably helpful to talk to an epidemiologist, public health doc like Dr. Cutler, an infectious disease physician specialist. You know, I'm a lowly ER doctor and a hospital president, so as far as a rebound of coronavirus, I just, I just don't know. But I do worry about vulnerability, like we talked about with the elderly population and the skilled nursing facilities. And I don't want to see anything like that happen. We're seeing in Woodland where they have a skilled nursing facility that is really in, in a tough situation right now over there. And that, that worries me. So we don't want to see that happen. We don't want people to let down their guard and, and stop paying attention to the social distancing piece and then end up with a significant resurgence or a rebound effect. So that's why we need to have these discussions with public health experts to figure out when can we start to loosen things up a little bit.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dr. Evans. So what I'm hearing from you is we need to continue the sheltering place and wearing masks and continue as if this is still moving upwards because we don't know for sure yet if we're over the peak. And in any case, we need to keep doing that until we hear otherwise.
Yeah, that's how I feel about it. And I'd certainly like to hear Dr. Cutler's thoughts on that as well. But my feeling is that it's too early to, to reduce the social distancing. And all the projections that I'm looking at about California and other places are assuming that the social distancing will continue for quite some time. And if, if we all of a sudden discontinue the social distancing piece, we will very likely see a significant surge in cases.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you so much. Jill Blake or Dr. Cutler, do you have something to add on this item?
So hi, Ken Cutler, Public Health Officer. I completely agree with Dr. Evans. Forecasting is difficult, and we, we are quite aware that there are certain vulnerabilities. So even though it's heartening that we have not had a rapid rise in laboratory confirmed cases recently, we do know that if the COVID-19 virus gets into certain settings, like a skilled nursing facility, things could change rapidly. So I'm happy to talk about what types of steps are needed so that we can start to phase out of some of the social distancing, but we're not there yet. But happy to go over that in our presentation. Thanks.
Okay. Are there any other, are there any public comments on this, Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Chair Hall. We have not received any public comment on this particular item.
Okay. As a staff, staff or colleagues on the board, any last comments before I ask for both for acceptance of this report? The Nevada County Public Health Department presentation to the board.
Motion, Dan Miller, District 3, to approve.
Second, Supervisor Schofield, District 2. Sorry, Sue.
Okay, move Supervisor Miller, second Supervisor Schofield. Madam Clerk?
Chair Hall, you can do a voice vote on this, if you'd like.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Thank you very much. That motion has been accepted. And Madam Clerk, does this take care of item number two on this as well?
As far, I don't, I don't understand what you mean.
Under, under item SR 20-1900?
Yes, this is a separate item, and Jill Blake will introduce that. And I believe she and Dr. Cutler will speak to that.
Okay, so that's what we're, that's the part that was a little confusing. All right, so we'll move, move on to the informational presentation. And Jill Blake, are you going to be managing that?
Yes, Supervisor, Supervisor Hall, this is Jill Blake, your Public Health Director. Thank you to Dr. Evans for the excellent presentation and information. Yes, we'll be presenting, just giving a public health perspective on this event. I'll start off, and then you will hear from Dr. Troche, who is serving as our Deputy Health Officer, and then from Dr. Ken Cutler as well. Thank you for the time to present to you. Thank you for your interest in this event. Supervisor Schofield, I'm just going to direct one first comment to you when you asked about recovery. While this doesn't necessarily indicate recovery, I can tell you that of the 34 cases in Nevada County, 26 are no longer being case managed or in isolation. So our CD nurses, our communicable disease nurses, are still working with eight people who have been diagnosed with COVID-19. I'd like to just touch on the stay-at-home order that was issued by the state health officer and supported by the governor. That stay-at-home order was really intended primarily to protect those who are most vulnerable to severe illness due to COVID-19, and also to allow time for the state's healthcare systems to prepare for a surge of people who would require hospitalization. Being as proactive as we have been in California and taking those measures does seem to indeed be flattening that epidemiological curve. So I just wanted to take a moment to thank you, to thank the community for adhering to that order. While public health officials can put the order in place, it's really what you do, what the community does, that has the impact. As Dr. Evans stated, we are not out of the woods. Now is not the time to let our guard down or for complacency. Instead, it really is time for continued vigilance. Dr. Evans also touched on the fact that we don't have really excellent modeling yet on a county level. But I can tell you that the California Department of Public Health is using four different models to develop their forecasting. They're using one called CHIME. They're using another out of Johns Hopkins. They're utilizing IHME, I believe Dr. Evans referred to that one, as well as COVID Act Now. And the projections on COVID Act Now, they actually do show county-specific data. Those projections show a low to moderate probability of hospital overload in the next two months, which is good news. But this is only true if we adhere to that stay-at-home order. So again, thank you to everybody for adhering, and please continue to stay at home. As I think Dr. Cutler hinted at, the state is now talking about how they might loosen the NPIs or the non-pharmaceutical interventions or ultimately remove them, but they're not quite there yet. They're in the process of setting up a framework. To touch on Supervisor Anderson's question about our work with Tahoe Forest Hospital. So this event is really happening in phases. We're starting with containment, moving to mitigation, and then to surge. Surge is where we're working really closely with the hospitals outside of what we do on a normal basis, which is provide supplies, work with them on PPE, as Dr. Evans mentioned. Our emergency preparedness coordinator is participating in Tahoe Forest surge planning meetings. There's regular contact between Dr. Cutler and the hospital's CEO. We continue to provide them with PPE. Their surge plan is a, is a dynamic one. And as you know, this situation is very fluid, so we're considering all types of options to support Tahoe Forest Hospital, including considering how we can assist to meet their anticipated staffing needs. We're in discussions about how we might be able to support patient transport. And then if they do get overwhelmed in Eastern County, we are considering the possibility of an alternate care site. And over the weekend, our emergency preparedness coordinator, Kim Blix, actually did a site survey in the Truckee area. So we continue to work with both hospitals. Again, it's a fluid situation, but we appreciate the partnership with both. At this point, I'd like to, again, reference that we're going to hear from Dr. Glenna Troche. Dr. Troche is a retired health officer from Sacramento County. She's been serving as our backup health officer for a few years and is now providing additional support during this event, and we're very grateful to her. After Dr. Troche, you'll hear from Dr. Ken Cutler, who is serving as our current health officer. So, Dr. Troche, I'll pass this off to you.
Good morning. This is Dr. Glenna Troche. I thank you all for allowing me to speak to you. I'm not sure if you can see me, but it is a pleasure and a privilege to work with Nevada County Public Health. And thank you for allowing me to do so. For the COVID-19 response, I have reached out to skilled nursing facilities, assisted living facilities, and group homes to discuss how we can help them stop the disease from entering their facility in the first place and affecting their residents and staff. entering their facility in the first place and affecting their residents and staff. They have all instituted strategies to screen staff every shift, sheltering their residents in place, and planning how they would manage if one of their residents were to have COVID-19 and not be hospitalized. Several nursing homes have already exercised their plan with residents who have spiked the fever, but thankfully have not tested positive for COVID-19. I have also held consultations with behavioral health providers and residential facilities regarding how they can best protect their staff and clients. I have consulted with the jail regarding their plan, which includes quarantining new arrivals and promptly isolating any inmate who exhibit symptoms. I have also worked with homeless services providers to help them work out how best to continue providing services while protecting their staff and clients. Because Spanish is my native language, I have also taped public service announcements in Spanish to reach out to the Latino population. I am available to continue to work in any way that Dr. Cutler and Ms. Blake believe it will be helpful, and it is a real pleasure to be here today. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Troche, for your work and for your presentation. Again, this is Jill Blake, Public Health Director. And now we'll hear from Dr. Ken Cutler, who's going to talk about Nevada County's case count, the covering-your-face or masking guidance, and then the isolation and quarantine orders. Dr. Cutler?
Yes, hi. Ken Cutler, Nevada County Public Health Officer. Before I get to those items that Jill listed, I just also want to add my thanks and gratitude to the public, who we know it's very difficult to adhere to the social distancing. Many people are missing paychecks, having difficulty with the new realities of physical distancing and staying at home. And I just want to recognize those challenges and thank everyone, because that, as we said early on, is our best tool for decreasing the surge of cases, of people being infected with COVID-19, and reducing the impact on our healthcare systems. With that, I also want to thank Dr. Brian Evans and his staff at Sierra Nevada Memorial Hospital for all the preparations and the care that they're giving, along with Tahoe Forest up on our Eastern County, their medical staff and administration. First responders have also stepped up and are doing a wonderful job in the community, and we know that from other states and in California, healthcare workers and first responders are really putting themselves at risk to take care of us all. And so I want to thank them as well. And we recognized early on that in Nevada County, we have an elderly population, we have a lot of people in closed environments such as skilled nursing facilities, and that's why we brought Dr. Glenna Troche onboard early on to increase our capacity to work with them. And so far, I think that's been wonderful, so wanted to thank Dr. Troche as well. So I was asked to talk about our case count, and everything I say should be viewed in the environment that of limited laboratory testing capacity that Dr. Evans spoke to. We all wish that everybody who wanted a test, needed a test for COVID-19, could get one. Jill and I just left an 8:00 statewide call where the laboratory directors reiterated again that there have been severe shortages of testing swabs, testing viral transport media, testing kits, et cetera. The PPE, the personal protective equipment that you've heard about, has been in short supply for those who are trying to obtain and collect tests as well. So there is a lot of focus on the number of laboratory confirmed cases and requests for more information about them. It's always been our intention to add more information to our dashboard and let you know more about age distribution, et cetera. I can share some of that information with you now, but please be cautious when you look at that, realizing that testing has been very limited, and so we have to assume that it does not tell us the extent of infections in our community. And even if we were to give locations, there may be multiple people who have been untested who have mild symptoms in other locations. And so please do not let down your guard, and please don't look at these numbers as an indication of extent. That being said, we have reported that we've had 34 laboratory confirmed cases of people infected with COVID-19 in Nevada County, 24 on the eastern side, 10 on the western side. What's important there as well is that, when did we receive these reports? From March 28th to April 2nd, 17 of the 34, so half, came in during that week, and we've only had two positive reports since that time. So that is an indication that all these efforts that people are making are helping. However, as was stated earlier, if that, the COVID-19 infection gets into certain settings, we know it's very efficient and very severe for people in closed environments like an assisted living facility, a skilled nursing facility, a shelter for our homeless population, those suffering from homelessness. So things can change very rapidly. In terms of age distribution, if you look at California, about three-quarters of laboratory confirmed cases have actually been in that 18 to 64 range. And I know we always talk about the elderly in COVID-19, but the concern is that many of the identified infections are in people younger, and they can transmit to those who have underlying medical conditions or the elderly. So we have to recognize that a number of infections are taking place in younger folks. And in Nevada County, about 82% of our 34 cases have been in that 18 to 64 range. We have a fairly even split of male to female. And then a lot of people have wondered how many tests have been done, and you would think that would be a simple answer, but as lab testing moved out of public health labs and into the commercial sector, our ability to track the negatives and how many tests have been done has been challenged. A number of labs will come in that are either duplicated on someone or come in with no identifying information in terms of address, and it takes a lot of staff time to try to find out, are they actually a county resident? Should we be counting that negative test here or not? And that staff time could better be utilized focusing on isolating people with disease and following their contacts and quarantine. But given some of the challenges, I can report that our best estimate is that about 908 tests have been done in county residents so far. And if you look at that per 100,000 population compared to the state, the state has today tested about 530 per 100,000 population. So I want to reassure people that testing in Nevada County is not what we all desire, but it's certainly happening actually at a rate that's higher than the state overall. And I think that's a testament to our healthcare workers who have set up testing at our federally qualified healthcare centers, at our clinics, in our private offices, and certainly at both hospitals as well. So I do anticipate that we'll be updating our dashboard with some more information in terms of age distribution, et cetera. Jill asked me also to talk about covering your face and masking. So we have always asked people who are ill with cough to cover their face so that it decreases respiratory droplets going out that can infect others. One of the things that has been learned about the COVID-19 virus is that people can be spreading that virus, transmitting it to others with either very mild symptoms or even a day or two before symptoms develop. And so we've extended that recommendation from people who have symptoms to anyone who is going out in public, please cover your face with a cloth covering. That can be a bandana, a scarf, a sewn piece of material. I thank everyone who has volunteered and donated supplies for that effort, but we haven't made face coverings mandatory, and I wanted to explain why. I think the concern is that if people cover their face, we want it in addition to all those other things people are doing. Staying at home, only going out for essential services, trying to limit the number of times you go out, meticulous hand washing, disinfecting surfaces, keeping your distance from others. If we don a face covering and then get closer to people, go out more, wash our hands less, then it'll defeat that purpose. And I think you'll have to experiment with your own face covering to make sure that you're not touching it and manipulating it too much. So if you do need to go out to the grocery store or other places, wash your hands before putting on a cloth face covering, wash your hands after putting it on, and wash your hands every time you use it, please. And there are good recommendations at the California Department of Public Health about maintaining its cleanliness, laundering it frequently, et cetera. And then Jill also asked me to talk about the isolation and quarantine order that I put out a week ago. This, again, relates to the limited testing ability. So what that broad, or some people would refer to it as a blanket order, allowed was that clinician who knows that testing may not be available for someone but believes that the person likely has COVID-19 can now have that person isolated at home, give them excellent guidance. We have it both in English and Spanish about how to do that, and then have their close contacts, household contacts, intimate contacts, who have potentially been exposed, also be quarantined and watch for symptoms over the next 14 days. And so by doing that, it really expands our outreach to try to protect the community from people who are having symptoms and haven't been able to be tested. So with that, I'll stop, and I'm happy to entertain some questions. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cutler, Dr. Troche, and Jill Blake. Let's see, let's go to some questions from the board. Supervisor Hook, do you have questions?
I'm Supervisor Hook, District 4. I don't have any questions right now, but it was a very good, thorough report, and I want to say how much I appreciate the daily reports that come out, and you guys have just been on top of it the whole time. So I, and I do have my mask.
Wash those hands.
And I washed, I got my lovely Germax, and wash, wash, wash. I've never washed my hands so much. I'm a ranch girl, but I got clean hands. So thank you, and I think we just got to keep encouraging. When my constituents call, I remind them, and kudos to the people in our community that are making masks. So there's been a huge outpouring of that, and people are really stepping up to the plate to help out this community. So I think that we have a unique place, and we have great staff, so thank you, thank you.
So Supervisor Hook, appreciate those remarks. One of the things we have been telling people that I didn't comment on is that the cloth coverings are really for the public who have to go out, but that we want those masks, the surgical masks, the N95 respirators, while there's a shortage, to really go to the healthcare workers and the first responders and those who are taking care of ill folks. Thanks.
Sue Hook, District 4. I agree with you, thanks. I think that this, these cloth ones that are being made, though, for like going shopping, and I liked your comment too, to remind people to clean them. You know, you don't just wear them day and day, day, day. You have to clean them. And I will say, I have a hard time, I want to, I'm a face toucher, I never realized that till I'm not supposed to. So this is challenging, and I think we're all learning from it, but I would say what a great job we're doing so far, and do not let our guard down. Do not let our guard down.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Hook. Supervisor Schofield, any comments or questions?
Yes, Dr. Cutler and Jill, thank you. Excellent report. You know, I go to the county website several times a day to look at the numbers and to see when it was updated, and I'm always pleased to see that number has remained fairly low. I do tend to look at the, our neighboring counties, and which leads me to a question. It would be nice if we were able to do a little more specific as to, at least on the west side, be known where those cases are. And the reason I say that is, I look at Placer County, and that's kind of a hotspot along with Sacramento County, and I look at my district where, especially in the Lake of the Pines area, there's such an influence on them with Placer County, Auburn, Roseville, that area. And you kind of question, if you knew a little bit more, you might be able to say, look, maybe you don't want to go down to those areas, maybe there's better places to go for your shopping. And the other one, just to comment, I know there's many factors here, but I look at the eastern side in Truckee, and then I look at Washoe County, and my gosh, we don't know much about Nevada and Washoe County, but those numbers are raising significantly. And then the only other question I have, Doctor, are you looking at additional restrictions? Because I love golf, and I think there's ways of doing it, but I'm getting calls and saying, hey, I see people out on the tees, four of them together, they're all buddies. It seems like maybe they're not following the social distancing. And of course, the fishing issue is something I assume the state will be handling, but are you looking at additional restrictions at all?
So, thank you Supervisor. Let me comment first on the locations and, again, the testing numbers. And I want to go back to that, when you look at that 34, I think it really gives us a misleading sense of the extent of transmission in our community, and we have to believe that there's community transmission, meaning people are passing it to each other if they're interacting, even often with very mild symptoms, not looking ill, and even before symptoms start. So I think if people say, oh, it's in X city or Y neighborhood, I should avoid that, they can be under the false impression that it's not the person near them who has no symptoms, and maybe not take the precautions they need to be. It's one of the reasons we've been more resistant about naming places. A, in a county of our size, where we are considered a small jurisdiction, when we start to give places and there's zero or one or two cases, confidentiality can be breached. And again, it can give that artificial sense that we know where cases are, and we know that for every laboratory confirmed case, there are multiple other ones that have not been identified. And so I would really not want people to feel falsely reassured that we know where it is. We have to, I think, act as if it's all around us. And we do know that we've seen large rises in jurisdictions around us, in Washoe, in Placer, in Sacramento, et cetera. And borders are porous, and people move, especially those now who still are providing those essential services to us. And you cannot tell by looking at someone whether they're harboring the virus or not yet. And so that's why it's so important not to let it down our guard, as people have said, and continue those efforts. In terms of more restrictions, County Council and I have talked about local shelter and residence orders, more for clarification, because as you know, the state health officer and governor's order on shelter and residence was very broad, and there have been lots of questions, what is an essential service? What is an essential business? How do I operate? And if we are able to put out something locally to clarify that, I think it would be helpful. In terms of golf, I have to say I don't see it as an essential service. There are a number of people who have to maintain golf courses, so they'd be leaving their house to do that and potentially putting themselves in harm's way. Now clearly, over time, we're going to have to loosen restrictions. So now may be a good time to mention that several prominent national experts have started to look at roadmaps for what might be necessary to loosen some of these physical distancing, social isolation, stay-at-home orders. And that would be really accessible personal protective equipment, the PPE you've been hearing about, so that if we do have a resurgence or a new surge, that the folks at the hospital, people at clinics, our first responders are adequately protected. Another is wide-scale laboratory testing. We know that less than 1% of Californians have been tested. The governor recently put together a testing task force, private-public partnership, to try to ramp that up, but we know that is weeks away. But people should be looking forward to a time when testing will be much, much more widely available, much easier to obtain, but that's going to take time to put into place. And then the ability to quickly isolate people, to quarantine their contacts, keep them from the general public if at all possible, and really methods to protect our most vulnerable, those in skilled nursing facilities and others. And so there's some groundwork that still needs to be done until we can really start lifting some of those guidances and restrictions. So thanks.
Thank you. Final comment, Madam Chair. You know, thank you so much, Doctor, for your explanation there. And I just want you to know that whenever I see something that comes out from you, either see it from you or hear it, read it from you, or Jill, you also, Ryan in our office up here, and Dr. Evans from the hospital, there's a sense of trust, and I want to tell you, that's greatly appreciated. I think that everybody in this community appreciates the work that you and the health providers and first responders are doing. So thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Supervisor Miller, do you have questions or comments?
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Dr. Cutler, I appreciate it. I had a family friend make this mask for me, and she delivered it in a I had a family friend make this mask for me, and she delivered it in a Ziploc bag with, with instructions on how to use it, exactly how you just explained. And I, I know you already told me, but it, it mirrors exactly what your instructions were. I appreciate the estimate as far as the testing numbers in Nevada County, because I think that's encouraging to know for county residents that we are actually doing more than state average. And even with the, the challenges that we have. So I, I just want to comment that I really appreciate that and, and the work that you and Dr. Troche are doing in coordination with the hospital and Jill.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Anderson. Supervisor Anderson, do you have questions or comments? And make sure you're off mute.
Thank you for the reminder, Chair Hall. This is Supervisor Anderson, District Five. Dr. Cutler, several questions. First, a shout out to the town of Truckee and the Truckee or Tahoe Forest Hospital District. They've both been doing extraordinary jobs, the garden, forming the public up here and keeping us safe. And, and I, I very much appreciate them as partners in this area. Dr. Cutler, as you know, eastern Nevada County, specifically from King, King Vale eastward to the state line, has roughly 17, 18% of the county population. We have 70% of the confirmed cases. Most of those occurred, as you noted earlier, in the, in the uptick in, in incidents. But, but it's, it's, it's a large percentage. And there is a fear here that as, as the days lengthen, as, as the weather warms, as school gets out, we'll see a huge influx of visitors to the area despite the, the governor's order. Do you have any, any advice for those of us on the east side with regard to how to deal with that? Or will advice be forthcoming at some point in the future?
Oh, I think we've been trying to message that, and I appreciated your message that you recently did as well. That we know that the eastern county has a number of second homes that people come to. And they have to realize that they may have better access to large healthcare facilities in their primary residence. And if, if they are going to shelter in place up in that region, everybody needs to abide by essentially our social compact, right? That, that we are going to play by the rules, keep our social distancing, not have gatherings, not meet at trailheads and exchange. We've been trying to do that messaging. We'll continue that. We'll work Tahoe Forest and the town of Truckee have been doing a good job trying to get that message out. If you recall, I wrote an order regarding short-term rentals. A lot of that was directed towards the eastern county so that those would only be used to house essential workers needed to help with utility lines, with healthcare infrastructure, for other really important services to keep things moving, but not for recreational purposes. And I think that's been helpful and we'll continue to message that. Tahoe Forest has excellent surge plan to increase their capacity beyond their, their licensed bed and their 25-bed critical access hospital status. But there are limitations. And so we need to continue to message, just as you did, that we can't have large populations gathering. So as, as restrictions may phase out over time, particularly in other areas, we are going to have to message and work with the Bay Area and others that travel outside of the area should still be very limited, particularly to those areas that have a cap on their, their surge abilities and just a limited number of ventilators, a limited number of healthcare providers. So I agree with that message. We'll continue to try to work with you and others to get that out.
Richard Andrews, Supervisor District Five. Dr. Cutler, thank you for, for saying that and also for emphasizing the messages that have gone out earlier. As, for, for my colleagues' benefit, the Truckee Forest Hospital District covers not just eastern Nevada County, but also eastern Placer County, a portion of Washoe County in Nevada, and I believe a small part of El Dorado County. And I learned yesterday that although we in eastern Placer County haven't had any, any recent increases in confirmed cases, there have been three within the district as a, as a whole, as of yesterday, three new ones, two of which are hospitalized. So the overarching concern is that complacency is an ally of the virus. We cannot be complacent. Doctor, Doctor Cutler, or Doctor Troche, roughly a fifth of our population here in Truckee specifically are of Hispanic origin. They, they're, they're important to our economy. They, they, they provide many of the services that, 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 that visitors require to the area. They're also involved in, in the trades and construction. They tend to live in, this community tends to live in, in, in high density situations, more persons per household. There's an issue regarding, there's concern within that community regarding transmit, transmitting all the disease. What are we doing, both county-wide as well as within eastern Nevada County, to ensure that this, this population group is, is, is being informed of the risks of, of being helped with regard to, to dealing with the risks? And, well, that's the question basically. How are we doing enough for, for this important part of our, of our community?
This is Glennan Troche. I'll answer what I have been doing, then Dr. Cutler and Ms. Blake may want to answer also. We are aware that this is a particularly vulnerable population. And materials are translated into Spanish. I am working with Kathleen Martin, who knows the community pretty well, and trying to make sure that all the messages are tailored to the particular circumstances of where people live. You have to, I, I prepared something on masking and just assumed that people had washing machines. Obviously, that's not necessarily true. So we have changed that to explain how they can still use masks and save them up in a sack, wash them off together when they go to the laundromat, things like that. So we are working to make sure that everybody is protected as best as they can be.
And Supervisor Anderson, this is Jill Blake, Public Health Director. I'd like to thank Dr. Troche. We've been really fortunate to have a Spanish-speaking health officer who can provide those videos and speak with that voice of authority and knowledge. I also wanted to emphasize that we've had our website translated into Spanish. And the materials that we put out are translated into Spanish. And again, now when we shoot videos, every video that we shoot that is explanatory is shot in Spanish as well. As Dr. Troche mentioned, she's working closely with Kathleen Martin from the Truckee Clinic. And the clinic staff was very proactive and started doing outreach to their clients just to check in and see how they were doing. And found out that there were a lot of questions that they had, basic questions that weren't being answered. And so Dr. Troche is shooting videos on a regular basis as Kathleen collects those questions to address those questions via video. And I think we're planning on doing that about twice a week. So it's an ongoing effort. And yeah, we're grateful to both our folks in Truckee and Dr. Troche for helping us make that effort.
Jill, Dr. Troche, Dr. Cutler, thank you for that. It's very much appreciated. Keep it up.
Thank you. And I just wanted to also add that as there have been statewide discussions on restrictions, shelter and residence, et cetera, we have raised the concern of multi-generational families together so that if younger folks now are out in the community as we phase out of the shelter and residence, we have to come up with strategies to protect either people with medical vulnerabilities or older folks in those homes. And so we've raised that at a state level quite loudly. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Not to be outdone, I have graduated from my love, love the Uba like a local kerchief mask to my own proper mask. And I use it when I go out to the grocery store. And I've limited my visits to the grocery store. I've managed to limit it to once a week. So I hope everyone else is working to do that as well. I have one question or comment for any of you to, or maybe Jill or Dr. Cutler to address. One of the concerns I have is that there's a lot of misinformation out on social media about what we should be doing or shouldn't be doing, or what the tests mean or don't mean. And you've done a fantastic job of explaining exactly to us what we should be doing. I wonder, without putting you on the spot, if you could also perhaps list a few of the places again, and you know, both our local Nevada County places, the hospital websites or information, state level, federal level, what you would consider to be trustworthy sites where people can and should be going to get their information and also to bet whether what they might be reading on social media is true. Do you mind giving us maybe a short list that even off the top of your head, Dr. Cutler or Jill, where you suggest we can get the best information?
I'll just kick it off, Dr. Cutler. This is Jill Blake, Public Health Director. I just want to give recognition to the county's PIO team, who has been extraordinarily helpful to us during this event. And we've communicated to the PIO team to list those trusted websites or those sources on our website. We recommend the California Department of Public Health, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, or the CDC, and the World Health Organization, or WHO. We try to make sure that we have regular postings with the most up-to-date information. There's so much information. I know it can be a bit overwhelming. But our website and those three sources. Dr. Cutler, I don't know if you want to mention any other resources?
The American Public Health Association has also posted a number of good resources for people to go to. Yep. So, and Jill has really served as our liaison from the Public Health Department with our public information officers, just to try to make sure that the communication is reliable. We do know that misinformation unfortunately spreads rapidly. We do our best to work against that. And so thanks for the question, because we do want people to go to those websites. Thanks.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you for all the work. I know everyone is working still around the clock, both on prevention and mitigation. Thank you for keeping that information, good information flowing. I too think we've done an amazing job for a small county especially. You know, the folks should know that we are communicating really well among all the parties on a regular basis. And we'll keep doing that. And so people should keep letting us know via their comments, our emails, our phones, if there are questions they have or issues of concern, and we will continue to address them with updates like this one. So thank you for that. I want to ask if there are from my colleagues or staff, any other comments or questions at this point?
Supervisor Hook, District Four. I just have one other question. You guys kind of talked on that just a little bit about the weather is getting better. We're light out till eight o'clock now. And so possibly some sort of update. I mean, we don't have parks. We do have some trails, but I will tell you, a lot of neighborhoods are being inundated with a lot more people coming out, walking, riding their bikes. So some type of a safety, I see a lot of kids without their helmets. But we still have traffic. We've got a lot of motorcycle traffic that I'm noticing now too. So some, I mean, we want people to get extra exercise, have to get outside. So probably some side of a little update on what's appropriate for being in different people's neighborhoods, because I still see groups. I always say, how about social distancing or wave, you know? You don't always get the right return comment after you make that. But I'm just saying, so the days are longer. Kids are getting cooped up. People are getting cooped up. What's your, what would be your thought on that?
Yeah. Hi, it's Ken Cutler, Public Health Officer. We do have the concern that as we extend the shelter and residence as we go along, it's harder and harder for people to, to stay home, which is why we try to let people know that this has been our best tool. This currently is our best tool. We don't have a vaccine for COVID-19. That's months and months away, if not more than a year away. And we're still waiting for clinical trials on medications. And so we will continue to emphasize that message and also realize that it's challenging. It's hard. As people are social animals, we want to get together. It's our natural default. And this is, feels unnatural. But it's, it's really important that every time we get closer together, if we're not immune, we could be inadvertently, unintentionally passing that virus to someone, and it could have severe consequence. So we'll try to get that message out. We do want people to be in their best health as possible, to get good sleep, to eat well, and to get out there with the proper social distancing, to walk, to get fresh air, to move around, but without the gathering. And it's difficult. Thanks.
Perfect. I thank you so much. I know, I just, I know we're repeating things, but I think we just have to repeat, repeat. You guys are doing the best job, because I know Richard is going to have that same issue with, he's a recreation community. So I hear people still going to the snow or out doing these things, which are good when you're by yourself, as long as you're careful and don't get lost in the snow like they did here just lately. So, but I, I just feel, I know Richard's district and rural communities are seeing that because that's where people need to go to have, spend some time out in this beautiful sunshine that we're getting. So thank you so much. Again, thank you both, Jill, all of you that are doing this work. And our PIO team, they are incredible, getting the messages out.
All right. Thank you. Madam Clerk, I believe we have had a public comment on this item. Is that correct?
Yes. Chair Hall, Julie Patterson-Hunter, Clerk of the Board, we have received two comments on this agenda item. The first is from Patty Lawrence, who lives in District One. And I'll read the email on behalf of Patty. "There was a very powerful flu-like illness that came through our area this past winter. A family member had it in late January, and I had it about a week behind her. I was sick during early February. I have discussed the experience with a number of people, probably at least a dozen or two friends and acquaintances, who have been able to commiserate with me about both the particular symptoms and also about the unique intensity of this illness that we experienced this past winter. Myself and others have said they have never been sick like that in their life. When I got sick, a friend joked about whether I had been to China recently, as this was where we were hearing frequent news reports about an outbreak. But there was no concept of even the possibility that we had the virus here in Nevada County. My symptoms included a fever and dry cough, shortness of breath, aches, exhaustion, and several others. The symptoms were most intense during the first five days, and then I began to feel a gradual recovery, which went on for about three weeks. In recent weeks, I have heard, seen, participated in speculation as to whether this illness was actually COVID-19, making a pass through Nevada County before we had any real testing available or were even aware as to the possibility of it. Certain experts in immunology have been speculating the same idea in regards to California as a whole. Now, several studies are being conducted in California to investigate whether a larger portion of the population indeed has antibodies to COVID-19, which would seemingly validate this theory and could explain this vastly slower rate of spread California is experiencing. Even a small sample of residents who were sick could be very telling. Getting an idea as to whether COVID-19 has already been into Nevada County for several months could possibly lead to speeding up of the restoration of normalcy, of the right to conduct business, generate income, and to gather, the ability for children to play together and for elderly to have company, for people to exercise and worship and celebrate together, to have weddings and funerals and parties and play dates. These events give much, a lot, much life to its structure, meaning and joy. It is upon our local government to do so in any small thing such as suggested, suggested here to help speed along this crucial shift back towards freedom." And she thanks you all for your consideration of her comments. So the second comment I did receive, actually, I received three questions from John Arona of the Union. And his three questions are, one, is a COVID-19 case number in the county confirmed lab cases or presumptive cases as well? Question two, how many recoveries has the county had? Question three, how many ICU beds are available at each hospital?
Okay. This is Ken Cutler, Public Health Officer. Let me first address Ms. Lawrence and, and her comments. Really appreciate the comments. We know that life is much richer when we get together, and I look forward to that time. But I, I do think as some of the social distancing and restrictions are lifted, it's not going to look like 2019 before, because we do not know the extent of immunity. Most experts are thinking it's actually relatively low, that the vast majority of us still have not had the virus, have not built up an immune response to the virus. Those studies are being done in very small Those studies are being done in very small pilots at first, and then they'll be expanded. And we will continue to advocate for access to good, reliable testing as it becomes available. There are two major buckets for types of tests. One is the one that people have been hearing about, which is the nasal swab that really is looking to detect the virus itself. That's the one that's being ramped up and is telling, do you have that virus with you now? The other test that Ms. Lawrence is talking about is called a serology test, and it's looking at, have we built up antibodies to protect ourselves against the virus? And that will be extraordinarily helpful, once we have reliable, widespread testing for that, to see who's likely immune. Having antibodies doesn't mean you're immune. So, there are actually other studies to say, what are the protective levels? How long do they last? Can you get reinfected despite having antibodies? So, a lot of unanswered questions. I will say, COVID-19 started to rise when flu and other respiratory viruses were really widespread. And so, a lot of people with flu-like viruses during the winter are thinking back, did I have COVID-19? And we don't have great answers for that yet. But I will say that a virology group in Seattle, as well as a virology group out of Stanford University, led by Dr. Benjamin Pinsky, have started to try to look at that. And so, Dr. Pinsky in Stanford, and we know the Bay Area was one of the early places for COVID-19 virus to be detected, they had saved respiratory samples from people who had presented with fever, cough, other types of things, to see, was it flu? Was it other viruses? Adenovirus, rhinovirus, seasonal coronaviruses, which are separate from the novel coronavirus? So, they went back to look at batch samples of those to see if they could detect COVID-19. And they looked at, they used samples, almost 3,000 of them in the Bay Area that had been collected, and their best guess was that COVID-19 really wasn't significantly rising until about mid-February, looking back to samples that began January 1st. So, it's a relatively small study, but it was thousands of samples that they pooled together to start trying to answer those questions. So, we'll need more of those studies. But it did seem to indicate that it was less likely to be widely circulating. And some people have said, could it have been here in the fall? Less likely, but still needs to be studied further. I don't want people to think that this flattening of the curve that Jill mentioned earlier is due to widespread immunity. We don't have evidence for that. I think it's much more likely due to these large social restrictions, limiting social gatherings, staying at home, and that's why we've said that's our best tool, until we know better. Thanks. And then, in terms of Mr. Aronas, yes, the, as I said at the outset, the case numbers that we're reporting are laboratory confirmed cases. The state and others are looking at possibly having a classification for reporting COVID-19 cases that don't depend on lab confirmation. That is in the works, and so, we'll look forward to that time and update people as that develops. Number two, there is not a standard definition for recovery right now. People are, when you see recovered on different websites, people are actually using different criteria for that. Is it seven days after a positive? Is it 14 days after a positive? Is it a period with symptom improvement? That's why Jill, at the beginning, talked about that we've had essentially 26 people who have been released from their isolation orders, and that means that they've gone a period of time with three days or more of no fever, three days or more of improved symptoms, and at least seven days since the onset of their symptoms. And that really is the Centers for Disease Control criteria for release for isolation. But that is not the same as some people are using for recovered. We'll see if we get some statewide consensus on a definition for that. And then, ICU capacity, is Dr. Evans still on the line?
Dr. Cutler, I was going to say, Jill Blake, Public Health Director, in the absence of Dr. Evans, we as a health department don't share hospital-level data, but we do get regular reporting, daily pollings on the bed capacity at both hospitals, Tahoe Forest and Sierra Nevada Memorial Hospital. We get that bed polling information so that we can identify when our hospitals are getting close to that point of surge or a point where they might be overwhelmed, and the polling is not indicating that they're in that danger at this point. But again, we don't, we don't share hospital-level data. Hospitals may, of course.
And I would also add that both hospitals have really brought teams together to be able to expand intensive care type of care beyond their ICU bed limitations in terms of having ventilators, training staff, and how to operate those, looking at bed capacity beyond their license number. That's the surge capacity you're hearing about. And so, both hospitals have put tremendous effort into increasing that ability. Thanks.
Thank you for those great responses, Dr. Cutler and Jill. And Madam Clerk, are there any additional public comments that have come in?
Chair Hall, Julie Patterson-Hunter, Clerk of the Board, and those were the two comments that we received on that item. Thank you.
All right. Great. So, then unless there are other final comments, I think I made a mistake and had us go ahead and accept item two when we wanted to accept item one, the first Sierra Nevada Memorial Hospital presentation. So, we've accepted that, if that's all right, Julie, Madam Clerk. And then, now we will go to the acceptance of the 2019 novel coronavirus informational presentation that this actually was.
Yes, thank you. It can also be a voice vote.
Okay. So, do I have a motion to accept this report?
Motion, Richard Anderson, District Five, to accept.
Second, Supervisor Hook, District Four.
Thank you, Richard and Sue. And do we, on a voice vote, do we, is there acceptance of this report? I?
Aye.
Any nays? Any abstentions? Okay. Thank you again so very much, Dr. Cutler, Dr. Trichet, Jill Blake. Fabulous report. I'm sure we'll want to have you back. Thank you so much.
And thank you.
We're going to move on to our next item, and this is an item that Supervisor Miller, as the Vice Chair, and myself as the Chair, are bringing forward. This is a resolution to establish a Nevada County Relief Fund to support our local nonprofits and small businesses due to COVID-19. Obviously, a few things, and then I'll ask Supervisor Miller if he wants to say a few things, and then we'll turn it over to Caleb Dardick to do the presentation, and we have some guests here who are going to help with that. I just want to say that this is, you know, we are aware and we see, we live in the community. We know what's happening downtown. We know that our small businesses are hurting. Our nonprofits that are trying to help other people are also hurting. I've heard from you, I'm sure it's, we all have gotten emails and phone calls. Of course, I can't go to the restaurants I love to go or shop at the places I love to shop right now, and we know that workers are hurting, store owners, folks who own the buildings, folks who are renting the buildings. So, we wanted to do something to help. And so, we pulled together this effort with the help of a whole host of people, and I'm going to leave that to Caleb to do the thank yous. And we're going to seed this. The county is stepping forward with our funds to seed this fund, but we'll be looking to the community to step in and help, to help make it something bigger and better. But I want to thank everyone who's worked so hard on this the last couple of years. I thank our CEO, Allison Lehman, and Caleb Dardick, who have really poured their selves into pulling this together, as well as the partners. And I'm very excited that I think we're going to be a unique county once again to be stepping forward as quickly as possible to help our local businesses, who are our neighbors and us. So, Supervisor Miller, do you want to add anything to this?
Yeah, I think, you know, on a national, state, and now local level, we've seen these efforts directed towards small business. And in our case, I think we need to recognize the nonprofits that serve vulnerable populations really are doing what they can to continue the services that they have. I think as far as our small businesses are concerned, especially our brick-and-mortar mom-and-pop stores and our restaurants, we want them to come back. When we reopen California, we want them to be there again, you know, doing what they do best, and that's, you know, putting everything on the line so that Nevada County, in the east side, the west side, have the goods and services that we want. You know, our restaurants obviously are getting hammered. We want them to come back, and I think in a small way, we need to recognize that, or in a large way, we need to recognize that sales tax drives our economy. And when we don't have sales tax coming in, we find the city of Grass Valley declaring a financial emergency, but people being laid off, and the fear that when we reopen, there's not going to be a job for them. So, I think as a community, we have a history of helping one another, and I think this fund is, you know, in recognition of that history that Nevada County does have. I saw the community of Truckee years ago, you know, help themselves and put things together, and I think that, you know, on the west side and the counties as a whole, we need to express our appreciation and our support for our businesses and our nonprofits.
Thank you, Supervisor Miller. And I just want to add that, again, this is a resolution that we're going, we haven't voted on it yet, but Supervisor Miller and I are sponsoring it. So, this will need a four-fifths vote, and we will do that after we hear the presentation from Caleb. I just want to add that this item and this fund that we're proposing is in addition to what we know the state and feds are stepping up to do. We know that the proposed solutions, the loans and grants out there are slow in coming. We know that there are still gaps, and so, this is our local effort to add on to what is out there. So, now that we, hopefully, we've teed that up for you. Caleb, are you there and available and ready to present this item?
Thank you, Chair Hall and Vice Chair Miller. I am here. My name is Caleb Dardick, and I'm a projects administrator in the CEO's office. Just completed six months and very proud to be involved in this effort. The Nevada, and I want to thank the two of you for cosponsoring this initiative. The Nevada County Relief Fund, as you mentioned, is an emergency response to our community in how we deal with this situation from COVID-19. I think both of you put it really well. We are living in difficult and uncertain times, as we heard from the doctor and the public health experts. We don't know how this crisis ends or how bad it will get. But as you both said, we know that people are hurting. We know that seniors are isolated. We know that people need help and that many people have been laid off, and many businesses are closed, leaving these store owners with their life work and their life savings at risk. But we also know that we're a kind and generous community, and this fund gives us an opportunity to express that together. Many of us who are more fortunate, who count our blessings, that we can work from home, that we have shelter and food, we want to give back. I've already heard from many people who are ready to donate, even those who are willing to give the relief checks that may be coming from the federal government to help their friends, their neighbors, and the businesses that we all love. So, what we're doing here with the Nevada County Relief Fund is creating a new vehicle to raise money to support the frontline safety net nonprofits who are providing a lifeline to our neighbors most in need. These nonprofits are bagging groceries, delivering food, making reassuring phone calls to see if folks are all right, letting them know that we care. But these organizations are being pushed to their limits. Their workload is exponentially, exponentially increased. This fund can bring them resources to expand their capacity and their reach. The Nevada County Relief Fund can help our small businesses, too. It can help them bridge gaps with grants to cover key expenses, help them with the rent until they can reopen or resume normal operations. Mostly, the funds will make a statement, and I think that's what you're doing today very loudly. We see you, and we have your back. It's hard to imagine it was only three weeks ago that CEO Allison Lehman directed me to explore the feasibility of creating this new fund. We saw models all over the state, from Placer County to Sacramento, from Berkeley to Ventura, and then right back in our own backyard with the Tahoe Truckee Community Foundation, also known as TTCF. They are doing inspiring work. Just recently, they've raised and dispersed hundreds of thousands of dollars in our community to eastern county nonprofits, caring for seniors, providing food, and much more. I want to take this moment to talk about the people who have helped bring us so far. I want to first thank TTCF's Executive Director, Stacy Caldwell, who has been a great resource to us and is now a partner in this coordinated countywide emergency response. With two funds, this new Nevada County Relief Fund and the existing Truckee Tahoe Emergency Response Fund, Nevada County donors will have two ways to give, uniting east and west in common purpose. I also want to thank Kimberly Parker, the Executive Director of the Sierra Nevada Memorial Hospital Foundation. She has been a thought partner from day one, and I want to, and is going to be our fiscal sponsor. And I want to thank the Board President, Gil Matthews, and his board for unanimously agreeing to service the fund's fiscal sponsor. I want to thank Steve Frisch and Kristen York of the Sierra Business Council. They have helped shape the lifeline for our struggling small businesses and will manage the micro grant program we are developing for those without access to other resources. I want to thank Jennifer Singer and Wendy Willoughby from the Center for Nonprofit Leadership, and Lisa Swarthout and Andy Burton from the Economic Resource Council, or their wise counsel, and support getting this concept off the ground. They say, if you want to get something done, ask a busy person. Andy Burton, who chairs our Transportation Commission and serves on the Area Four Agency on Aging, has also taken lead on launching our new website, NevcoRelief.org, which should be launching in the next couple of days, and for also co-chairing our Marketing and Communication Committee. Thank you, Andy. I want to thank the members of the Adult and Family Services Commission and the HHIS staff for repurposing $30,000 in community initiative funding to seed this new effort, which they recognize will be an urgent and critical safety net for our community, helping those in need with food, medicine, shelter, counseling, and more. Finally, I want to thank you, Chairwoman Hall and Vice Chair Dan Miller, for cosponsoring this resolution. Thanks to your leadership today, the Board of Supervisors is issuing a challenge to the entire community. You are going first, putting up the first $100,000, which we hope will be multiplied by generous donors, community members, and stakeholders many times over. So, with that, let me introduce the first of our four guests and partners that I have mentioned, Kimberly Parker, Executive Director of the Sierra Nevada Memorial Hospital Foundation. Kimberly.
Hello, this is Kimberly Parker, Executive Director of Sierra Nevada Memorial Hospital Foundation, and I want to just say what a pleasure it has been to work in this collaborative effort. It really does show you what an amazing community we live in, when in a three-week period, as Caleb and Allison, you know, know, that something can be pulled together that is going to be so meaningful to so many in our community. As a nonprofit myself, I know firsthand that every nonprofit in this community continues to try to do the work that they can, either to serve individuals or the community as a whole. But as Caleb mentioned, it is very, very difficult. I also share Supervisor Chair Hall's feelings about the ability to simply go and do our business in our towns, whether it's at the movie theater, or it is at a restaurant or somewhere else. It's very important that we support those small businesses that in so many ways have been supportive to our community throughout the years. We were honored with Sierra Nevada Memorial Hospital Foundation to be asked to be fiscal sponsor for the Nevada County Relief Fund. The fund is set up- to be fiscal sponsor for the Nevada County Relief Fund. The fund is set up and ready to go and will begin accepting donations as soon as the website is open in a couple of days. The funds will go into our community, as mentioned, to the nonprofits and to business. And that will be determined by an independent group of committee members that will be brought together. I want to thank everybody who's worked on this project so far and let you all know that we will be here to serve in whatever way we can. Thank you.
This is Caleb Dartik again. Thank you, Kimberly. I would like to now bring Stacy Caldwell, Executive Director of the Tahoe Truckee Community Fund, or Foundation. My apologies.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Stacy Caldwell. I'm the CEO of the Tahoe Truckee Community Foundation. And Supervisors, thank you so much for inviting us to be a part of this. And I appreciate Caleb and Allison and everybody's efforts to really bring philanthropy to the forefront as a response to our community's needs. I think that the vision here is to really address philanthropy from a community-wide standpoint and acknowledge that Nevada County is strong and resilient and to build the kind of infrastructure in place so that we can work together in our recovery and response to the community. The Tahoe Truckee Community Foundation was built two decades ago by many of our community leaders who really put a lot of time and energy into creating that philanthropic arm. And we're seeing that effort pay off to this day. Not only have we been able to mobilize and deploy those funds, but we are really closely connected to the nonprofits up here that are serving not only the frontline, but beyond the frontline as well. And so we are proud to be a part of this effort. We recognize that our Western counterpart is boldly going forward to really bring philanthropy into the light. And we appreciate that you recognize existing infrastructure and leadership in this effort. So when we talk about a fund, we're really talking about two funds. And yet, we also recognize that this is the opportunity to really build new infrastructure to respond to these types of issues with philanthropy. So with that, I'm available for questions, but just want to thank everybody for all their effort, and this is really exciting.
Thank you, Stacy. This is Caleb Dartik again, and I would like to now introduce Steve Frisch, the President of the Sierra Business Council.
Good morning, Caleb. This is Steve Frisch, President of Sierra Business Council. And good morning to all of the members of the Board of Supervisors. First, I'd like to commend you on taking this visionary step to kind of get started on restarting businesses and supporting nonprofits in our community. It's very inspiring to see your leadership. Sierra Business Council also manages the Sierra Small Business Development Center. So we have, as you might imagine, been inundated with requests from businesses across the county about accessing small business administration and fed loan programs. So we've been providing quite a bit of technical assistance for people in that area. However, it's apparent to us that there is going to be a need for a bridge fund for small business, that there are many small businesses that will fall through the cracks or will not qualify for some of the existing SBA programs. Many of these are small proprietors. They might be people working in industries where they don't have a physical location, like, you know, professional services or small vendors. They might be musicians or gig workers. They might be people who are working, you know, in fields where they don't have a strong affiliation or association with a bank or, or kind of the financial statements that they need. And a very small amount of money delivered as a micro grant can actually get them back in business, which is a really important part of what we'd like to focus on. So, so our role will be essentially to work with the Community Advisory Council to establish guidelines and to develop a program to deliver funding in the form of micro grants to these businesses at the appropriate time to try to get them restarted. And we look forward to working with the group. It's been a pleasure to work with Caleb and the rest of the team, and we stand ready for questions at your, at your wish. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Steve. This is Caleb Dartik, and I now would like to introduce Jennifer Singer, who is the Board President for the Center for Nonprofit Leadership. Jennifer?
Thank you, Caleb. And yes, I'd just like to echo every, everything I've heard so far. Thanks to Caleb and Allison for starting this effort. Thank you very much to Supervisors Hall and Miller for sponsoring, and to the other supervisors for what I hope is your support coming soon. You know, this is, it's exciting to know that these kind of efforts are, are happening now. There's many of us in the nonprofit community who have, have hoped for these kinds of efforts in the past. And I want to echo Stacy's mention of philanthropy. Philanthropy has been alive and well in this community for many years and has supported many nonprofits. And we want to thank our community for continuously stepping up for our community and really thank the board for this challenge. I think it does send an important message to your nonprofit and small business community that you are here with us and, and here are, here are challenges. So as Board Chair of the Center for Nonprofit Leadership, we do know that we have our frontliners out there who are working hard and ramping up, and we want to support them. And we also have our eyes on our innovators and our organizations that are able to kind of shift and do, do their business in a different way these days and honor them for that. And then to honor and accept that there are some organizations out there that simply cannot function right now and have to really cease operations. And keeping our eye on all of them and supporting all of them in this difficult time, especially to our arts organizations out there. You know, when the world opens again, we will need you more than ever to come together and connect and celebrate. And yeah, so thank you all. We look forward at Center for Nonprofit Leadership to continue to communicate with our nonprofits and express back to you their challenges and efforts and needs. And I want to thank everyone for being involved in this and echo Kimberly's excitement. This is the county you can pull it off and together. I think we have always done that, but with this is, we are really upping our game in this department. So I want to thank you all for that.
Thank you, Jennifer. This is Caleb Dartik again. And I just want to really thank all four of you for being so receptive and engaged as we get this Nevada County Relief Fund and our partnership with the Tahoe Truckee Community Foundation launched today. And with this challenge grant, assuming that we have the support, we'll really send that strong statement. And I know, and we know, that there are many, many organizations and stakeholders and community leaders, the towns, town of Truckee, and the cities of Nevada City and Grass Valley, our special districts, our rotaries, our faith-based organizations, the entire community is ready to step up and to support one another, just as they always have. And so we are ready to take your questions. And of course, our appreciation, my appreciation to my supervisor, CEO Allison Lehman. So I'll turn it back to you, Chairwoman Heidi Hall.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Caleb, and thank you to all of you for a great presentation and for being available to help present this item. I'm going to go to my colleagues on the board first for questions, and I'll start with Supervisor Scofield. Do you have questions or comments, Supervisor Scofield?
I think it's all been said, Chairman Hall. Thank you for your efforts.
Great. How about Supervisor Miller?
No, I, one comment or a couple of comments. Steve Frisch, I really loved your description of this being a bridge fund for those businesses that are in a wait mode. But I think that description was very, very adequate and appropriate. But for other businesses, this is really a lifeline. And I think our community, as Jennifer so nicely pointed out, our, our community has always been ready to step up and help one another. So, you know, to me, for what Heidi is wanting to do, I think this is, this is a great example of Nevada County at its finest.
Great. Thank you. How about Supervisor Anderson? Supervisor Anderson, make sure you unmute, and you, it's your chance for comments and questions.
Supervisor Hall, thank you for that reminder again. First of all, I want to thank, thank you and, and Vice Chair Miller for sponsoring this item. It's extremely important, and, and I think it exhibits the, the best of our, of what our county is all about. I also want to thank the, the nonprofit participants in this, the SBC, the Truckee Tahoe Community Foundation, the, the Hospital Foundation, and the Center for, I didn't quite get their whole name, but, but Kimberly's Group. It's, you know, it, we're taking sort of a leap into the unknown, but it's, 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 it's a leap which I'm sure will, will reap great benefits for, for our communities. Three questions. Just because I'm curious about the mechanics of this. The first question is, there's clearly, there seems to be clearly a split between, between funding for nonprofits and funding for businesses. How's that allocation to be made? The second question is, if one wants to donate money, is there a way to, or will there be a way for, for a donor to indicate west county versus east county, simply because we have a different, we have a different nonprofit, or collection of nonprofits on the west side versus the east side, although there is a little bit of crossover here and there? And the third question is with regard to the $100,000 that's being used, the $100,000 of county funds that are, that's being used to, to frontload the, the programs. And by the way, thank you to the, to the CEO's office for that. Is that being also allocated in an equitable manner between east county and west county? So those are the three questions I'd like to have addressed.
Right. This is Caleb Dartik. I want to first check in with Allison Lehman, if you want to respond or?
Sure. Good morning, Supervisors. Hello, this is Allison Lehman, CEO. So to answer your first question, Supervisor Anderson, we are looking at the allocation being $50,000 for our safety net nonprofit programs. We're working with the Tahoe Truckee Community Foundation to ensure that there's equity. The additional $50,000 would go to the Hospital Foundation. That would be passed through, through Sierra Business Council, and they would be providing the business support services on both eastern and western counties. So they will be the service provider that will be countywide. To answer your question regarding the donation and the mechanics of that, we're envisioning that the website will have two buttons to donate. It will reflect both a donation to western county efforts as well as to eastern county efforts. The reason why it's being set up that way, to echo Stacy Caldwell's remarks earlier, is that eastern county does have the infrastructure already in place and is already providing funding opportunities to the nonprofits. So we felt that there was no need to duplicate their efforts and that we should go ahead and use what already existed. In terms, your third question, in terms of front-loading the, the allocation, do you want to go ahead and clarify on your third question, Supervisor Anderson?
This is Supervisor Anderson, District 5. Allison, you've, you've sort of touched on it. Those $100,000 of county revenue being, being utilized to, to finance the programs or, finance the programs that, that will be identified by, by the SBC and also by the, and the TTCF on the east side, but, and also by, by whomever is doing the, the identification on the west side for the, for the nonprofits. And actually, it's not very clear to me who's doing that, but that's less of my question right now. More simply that, there's $100,000 being given. Can, can the eastern county area expect an equitable return to our area for the, for, to meet the needs that we're facing in the, within the Truckee area up in, up in the summit and Hurstdale Forest and et cetera?
Yeah, absolutely. We've been working with our eastern county partners on that to ensure that there's equity. But I also want to remind the board that this is just one tool that the county is using with really a focus on recovery. The board has also approved additional contracts to support our nonprofits where there's been immediate needs. And that includes the warming center up in eastern county. That includes services in eastern county or western county where we see service gaps. So this is in addition to. And I just want to use this opportunity to, one, relay my appreciation to the leadership of the board for considering this item for action. And then also to remind the board that really the county has three roles. And you heard the in-depth presentation on the public health response to this health crisis. And our second role is maintaining the core services of our county operations from roads to child welfare to wastewater. And then third is really what aligns with this item in front of you is bringing focus to our recovery efforts. And we really believe that this is going to be an important tool. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Chair Hall, I have a question.
In involvement, let me get to Supervisor Hook first, and then we'll come back to you, Supervisor Miller. Thank you. Supervisor Hook, do you have questions or comments?
This is Supervisor Hook, District 4. And I don't have any except for, I think this is an incredible move forward for our businesses and nonprofits in Nevada County. I think everyone's struggling as I talk to constituents every day about going through the loan process or working even through their unemployment situations, that there's going to be a lot of need for recovery out there and help with that. So, and a lot to SBC for actually helping folks get through those processes. And what a great place for them. I think that's a super place for it to be funded through. So thank you again, Dan, Heidi, staff, Allison, Caleb, all of you. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Supervisor Miller?
Okay, Dan Miller, Supervisor, District 3. Allison, could you explain to Richard, I think this is probably something that hasn't been explained, how the $250,000 or where the $250,000 pots are coming from and where they're going to be designated?
Yes, I'm happy to. This is Allison Lehman, CEO. Supervisor Miller, the two pots are coming from, one is $50,000, which is general fund. $30,000 of the 50,000 is being repurposed from the community initiative funds. I appreciate the efforts of the Adult and Family Services Council that relayed their support to repurpose these funds to address the immediate need. That $50,000 will go to business support services specifically. With the board's authority, the dollars would be transferred to Sierra Nevada Memorial Hospital Foundation as our fiscal sponsor, who would then pass those funds to Sierra Business Council, who will be our provider for business services both on eastern, western. The second $50,000 will be realignment, and those would be focused on safety net services provided by our local nonprofits. The $50,000 in discussion with the Tahoe Truckee Community Foundation, we're looking at a $10,000 allocation to eastern county and $40,000 allocation to western county. But we also all agree, all the partners involved realize that we need to be flexible and nimble because our true goal is to meet the highest community need during this public health crisis.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Miller.
We can't hear you.
Supervisor Hall, you're on mute.
Thank you. At this time, I want to ask our Madam Clerk if we have any public comments or public questions.
Yes, thank you Chair Hall. We do. We have a total of four comments or questions on this item. And I'll start with the ones that we received first.
And Madam Clerk, could you, could you please go one at a time? We answer one, I'll try to provide an answer or direct for an answer each one.
Yes, certainly. Thank you Chair Hall. This is Julie Patterson-Hunter, Clerk of the Board. First comment or information we received was from Janice Maroletti, the Executive Director of the Gold Country Senior Services. She asked that we prioritize older adults who are homebound, frail, low income, and without resources or support from family and friends. The waiting list for Meals on Wheels continues to increase in western Nevada County as more and more seniors need food delivered to their home. Eighty-four seniors are on the waiting list for Meals on Wheels. COVID-19 has had a huge impact on their agency with more and more seniors in need of food. COVID-19 has had a huge impact on their agency with more and more seniors in need of food. So that's our first.
Thank you. Caleb, could you discuss a little bit how we're, the fact that we are prioritizing our highest needs and how this fits into that?
Sure, this is Caleb Dartik. Thank you, Madam Chair. And we are really hoping to move into the next phase where we would put together an advisory group and working groups of community leaders to help partner with us on some of the mechanics. We have a number of HHSA staff who are going to work with me and community leaders to put together a very streamlined, but transparent and transparent application process and make it very easy for eligible organizations that are well-known and well-respected in our community to apply and receive funding. So that is, you know, some of the mechanics are underway and sort of waiting for today to get the go-ahead to engage staff in developing those guidelines for applications, reviews, scoring, and making award decisions. So that is, moving quickly, similarly on the business side, we also want to put together a very streamlined application process that would then be reviewed and scored by the Sierra Business Council. So some of these mechanics, you know, still need to be worked out and will be shared, you know, probably in the next couple of weeks. Our hope is to really launch today and focus our energies on outside-facing with the launch of the website and raise money so that we have sufficient funds in a meaningful amount of money that we can actually distribute it and make a difference. Thank you for the question.
Thank you. Thank you Ms. Mariletti. And to just acknowledge, we are aware here at the county that food insecurity in our elder population is a high priority issue.
Absolutely.
So thank you for that. Okay, Julie, do we have another question to take?
Yes, again Julie Patterson Hunter, Clerk of the Board. We received an email from Nicole McNeely. She is the Executive Director of the Food Bank of Nevada County. And her comments is, "To the Board of Supervisors, it has come to my attention that you will be deciding how to allocate the Community Relief Fund. It is imperative that you prioritize funding for local nonprofits that are fulfilling the gaps to the at-risk groups in our community and provide a safety net for this county. As you are aware, the Food Bank of Nevada County is serving approximately 2,500 individuals each week at their direct distribution. This number continues to grow every week. We are also providing food bags, food bags to other agencies, excuse me, specific programs like home delivery and meals for the unsheltered community. The only limitations to what we do and continue to provide food to our community is having access to adequate funding."
Thank you. And I will see if CEO Allison or Caleb, you'd like to respond to that. I will just say that again, we are aware that the Food Bank is providing an absolutely essential service and that they have been requested to fulfill far more needs than they ever anticipated. So that I'm sure will be taken into consideration. Caleb or Allison, do you want to comment on that as well?
I'm happy to comment and I agree with you Supervisor Hall that the Food Bank and Interfaith Food Ministry and Meals on Wheels and other programs that have really ramped up services due to the demand would all be eligible for these funds.
Okay, great, thank you. Julie, you want to go to the next one?
Yes, certainly. Thank you. Julie Patterson Hunter, Clerk of the Board. Our next letter is from Anna Acton, the Executive Director of Freed. It's a fairly long letter, so I'll hit the high points and this will become part of the public record and it will be forwarded to all the board members also, as will the other emails.
So, "Dear Heidi, I am writing to support at the Community Relief Fund. Freed requests that safety net programs, including those that serve at-risk COVID-19 populations, such as older adults and people with disabilities with chronic health conditions, be prioritized for use of the funds. Freed went to virtual services in early March and has been working in collaboration with Aging and Disability Resource Connection Partners, including Nevada County Health and Human Services, Connecting Point 211, Gold Country Community Services, Nevada County Food Bank, Neighborhood Center for the Arts, as well as Interfaith Food Ministries, Emergency Operations Center, and other key Nevada County community-based organizations. Our goal has been simple, to ensure that people with disabilities and older adults with access and functional needs safely shelter in place with ongoing access to the services and supports they need to live independently at home. This target population is at risk for complications from COVID-19 and is in need of additional services and supports. During this time, more than ever, we need to collaborate and leverage resources to meet certain gaps in service. Current needs and gaps in services that we've experienced during this COVID pandemic over the last month and could be supported by a Community Relief Fund include..." She outlines six different particular areas. The first is access to food and essential goods. Second is isolation of older adults and people with disabilities. Third is individual financial assistance for seniors, people with disabilities, and families. Four, person-centered case management for individuals who are homeless, transitioning out of the hospital, or sheltering at home. Five, wheelchair-accessible transportation to access basic needs. Six, access to technology and high-speed internet for organizations and community members. To support Community Relief Fund and local safety net organization, Freed is willing to reach out to our donor base to support the community effort. We look forward to our continued partnership with the county and community organizations to meet the needs of those most at risk for complications due to COVID-19. A Community Relief Fund can greatly increase the capacity of critical safety net providers to meet those needs and build resiliency. While the gaps in services and needs identified are current with the COVID-19 pandemic, they will become exasperated in the months ahead as we are recovering from the financial and economic impact of COVID and are faced with wildfire season and public safety power shutdowns. We are at a time where we need to build the capacity of nonprofits to address COVID-19, but to also address community resiliency moving forward. Thank you for your consideration."
Thank you. Let me express for the, on behalf of the board, I'll get to you also Caleb, but express our thanks to Anna Acton for always making sure we know what the needs of our disability community are. Again, we are aware that they are a vulnerable, particularly vulnerable community. They are on our radar. But thank her very much for her support and for ensuring that we have the list of the high priority needs for that community. Caleb, did you want to comment?
Yeah, this is Caleb Dartik and I want to thank all three of the commentators, Janice, Nicole, Anna. These are well-respected and very effective nonprofits in our community. And one of the things that we've been talking about, and Stacy Caldwell, I'm going to ask her if she might comment as well, is how we can use these moments to provide that gap relief, but to do it in a way that is innovative and promotes capacity building and resiliency. And, you know, Stacy had shared with us an example in which there was an investment, where there was a need for food and the investment was in a vehicle to transport more food. And I would just love to turn it over to Stacy for a minute to share that and other examples on how TTCF has approached shaping grants to make a difference and benefit our community in a very sustainable way.
Thank you Caleb. Yes, I just thought it might be helpful to have a window of the way TTCF works up here as an example that could be carried through the rest of the county. So originally, when we pulled together our team to start looking at what's happening on the ground, about three and a half weeks ago, we recognized that we needed some kind of framework to not only stimulate conversations about what the need is, but to inform donors how we would direct some of those dollars. And kind of to Allison's point, it's really important to stay flexible during these times. We don't know what's behind any corner and so we need to be able to not only think about today, but tomorrow. Looking at the nonprofit community and that capacity piece, so many of our nonprofits, and I'm sure this is true on the western side as well, these programs were designed to serve a very small population within our community around hunger relief or mental health needs or that access to very specific types of healthcare. And so we really realized that our first round of funding needed to be an investment in their business infrastructure. So for those nonprofits that had to pivot their operations and move to virtual, if they had laptops so that their team could actually communicate and do business, to Caleb's example, we needed a refrigerated food truck up here for one of our main family providers, Sierra Community House. And so we really started asking our nonprofits, what can we help invest in so you can stabilize your operations, make that pivot, and then scale? And we believe that the types of dollars that we're putting in the community are doing two things. One, they're doing the most basic of safety net services. Feed people, provide people with therapies and access to the care that they need. But it's also investing in business infrastructure that will serve our community beyond this crisis. And so finally, I would offer that the framework that we're working from right now, which crosses multiple institutions across our community, is access to food, shelter and lodging, senior care, mental health, essential workforce. So that one is really making sure we have a central workforce stood up beyond this, you know, this next week and through this crisis. And then finally, completion of the census because we believe that now more than ever, making sure that there's a complete count in the census. So many people will be accessing new resources that they've never had to use before. So many people will need services that they've never needed before. And those kinds of resources get allocated at the state and federal level because of complete count. So we've kind of embedded that into all of our strategies. So that's the framework we're working from. We're looking at stabilization and scale. We got that first round of grants out the door to that safety net group. And now as we continue to raise funds, we will continue to keep safety net on our radar, making sure they have what they need. But we will also start looking towards innovation now and thinking about how does a community transform itself to be that resilient community beyond this crisis? And then finally, my last comment here is it's so important to acknowledge all the different funders. And so we're paying attention to where funding is flowing from all the different foundations and organizations and public agencies so that we can be strategic with those philanthropic dollars. And so I know that that's what's going to start happening at a countywide level, which I think is really one of the benefits of this effort. So thank you for the time. Thank you for letting me share that level of detail.
Thank you.
Thank you Stacy.
Yeah, thank you Stacy very much. Thank you Caleb. Julie, I think you said we had another comment?
Yes, thank you Chair Hall. Julie Patterson Hunter, Clerk of the Board. I did receive a call from Matthew Coulter, county resident. He wants to know how much of this fund will be from volunteer funds or donations funds that will be taken from the county? What will they take, what percentage will they take? And what are they taking it out of? So I think he's saying that he's wondering where those, exactly those funds are coming out of the county budget.
Right, thank you for that. Thank you, thank you to Mr. Coulter for that question. I think we had Allison Lehman laid out exactly where the funds are coming from that we're beginning with. We are, of course, hoping that this is just a start and that there will be donors in the community who will help sustain this fund and that folks who would otherwise donate are going to continue to do that. I understand his concern, making sure we're not taking funds away from other organizations that need donations perhaps. And we hope that that doesn't happen as well.
And Chair Hall, Allison Lehman, CEO, I appreciate Mr. Coulter's question and he could find the financial information down to the fund assignments and the staff report, which is located on the Board of Supervisors website attached to the agenda.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Julie, it looks like I'm seeing on my, on the chat that you may be getting some additional public comments in?
Yes, Chair Hall, there's more coming in. And this is Julie Patterson Hunter, Clerk of the Board. The next question is from John Arona. He's from the union. He wants to know what type of fiscal sponsorship will the county have at the hospital and what services will that include? That's question one. Does that agreement need to be ratified by the board? Question three, as a structure of the project rolls out, will its specifics need to be approved by the board? Question four, is there a timeline on a rollout of the specifics? And there will be more, I have more questions, more emails after that Supervisor Hall.
Thank you. So Caleb or Allison, one of you want to take this one?
Sure, I'd like to lean on Kimberly Parker to talk about the fiscal sponsorship of the foundation. Before doing so, I will answer the question in terms of the agreement. We're seeking direction and authority from the board for us to enter into agreement with the hospital based on the staff report. Where we will come back to the board to report out on the program and how it's going. And all the funding allocations will be made public through posting it on the website. And then the same goes for the structure that you heard from our community partners in terms that of the structure of partnering with both the foundation on eastern and western and Sierra Business Council. Agreements will be put in place once we receive authority from the board. And then I would go ahead and enter into those agreements on behalf of the county as CEO and then bring back updates as needed to the board. But I like to point out that we're, this is bigger than one entity. This is bigger than the county. This is really a community effort. We are proud that the county and Chair Hall and Vice Chair Miller are champions behind this to have these as seed funds to really spark our community. And so we believe that this is just a start.
Thank you for that. Okay, thank you.
Are you online to talk about the fiscal sponsorship and the mechanics of that?
Sure, this is Kimberly. Can you hear me? Kimberly Parker, Executive Director, Sierra Nevada Memorial Hospital Foundation. You know, the mechanics of it is as agreement of, as part of the fiscal sponsorship. And again, we're the western side of the county fiscal sponsorship. Stacy and the Tahoe-Tahoe Community Foundation are handling the east side. But we have worked with the county. This is not coming kind of under the name of Sierra Nevada Memorial Hospital Foundation. This is coming under the Nevada County Relief Fund. We have set up an independent bank account at a bank here in town and it is under the name of Nevada County Emergency Relief Fund. Donations from the community will go directly into that fund either by going through the website when it's up and being able to go to the Donate Now button and putting your donation in that way or through checks that will be made out to the Nevada County Relief Fund and put into the account that way. We'll also work with people that have other kinds of donations they want to do. If they want to do credit cards or gift of stock or other kinds of things, we will be nimble and flexible. The funding will go in there. As the nonprofit, we will send out the gift acknowledgements and gift receipts, you know, for those gifts and we will track and report out on the gifts coming in and the gifts going out into the fund. We will not, the hospital foundation is not the decider of how these funds are being spent. That's not our role. We will however, just have oversight to make sure that everything is in line with what one can do under a nonprofit status. And these will be tax-deductible gifts that people will be able to make into the fund.
Thank you Kimberly, that's helpful. And in case Allison, you may have already mentioned this, but the funds that come from the county, there will be reporting back to the county at some point on how those are spent. We will continue to do our publicly, our fiscal responsibility as a public agency on those funds as well.
That is Allison Lehman, CEO. Chair Hall, yes, that's absolutely correct. These are government funds that will be accounted for.
Great, thank you. Before we go on to the next public comment, let me just remind folks that the public comments that are coming in will be recorded. They will be part of the record. comments that are coming in will be recorded, they will be part of the record, and this whole meeting is being recorded. So the answers will also be available for you at a later time if you want to get them through the recording. Okay, Julie, do we have another comment?
Yes, thank you, Chair Hall. Julie Patterson Hunter, Clerk of the Board. The next comment, the individual did not leave their name, but I'll read it into the record. This person says, "Hi, I am just curious about the inmates at Wayne Brown Correctional Facility or within the area. Are they getting PPE equipment, personal protection equipment, packages, they are able to stay informed of what is going on? Be accurate information. The company, GTL, has given three free talks today, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday." I have to apologize because this is a voice-to-text program, so.
It doesn't, it doesn't sound like this is apropos to this particular item, so we'll just take, we'll just take the comment and move on from there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. He's honored and unable to clarify what kind of facility. Yeah, I'll forward this to everybody. I don't, you're right, this is not for this item. So the next question is from Lee French of District Two. He's wondering about how no one seems to have brought up the supply of demand. Oh, sorry, this is another item for the earlier question, so I'll just forward to Supervisor for District Two, and I'm sure that he can respond to that.
And let me apologize if there, if some of these comments came in earlier in the meeting before the items, they, we did, some of them got caught and came late to our course.
Yeah, they just, they just showed up and, but we will respond to them following the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Are there any additional ones?
That's it. Thank you, Chair Hall.
Thank you very much. Let's come back to my colleagues. I know Supervisor Anderson, you mentioned that you had another question or comment.
Thank you, Chair Hall. Richard Anderson, Supervisor, District Five. What role, if any, will the board play, or members of the board play with regard to the, to the allocations, to the grant allocations to different nonprofits, et cetera?
So Chair, Allison Lehman, CEO, Chair Anderson, we really want to support a community-driven process. So the action you're taking today is directing these funds to support small businesses and nonprofits that support safety net services due to this health crisis. We want to lean on our partners and those who are on the front lines to then allocate those funds to meet those needs. So right now, you're providing the general direction of how these funds will be used. County staff will report back to the board, as well as to the public, of how the county funds are spent. Our goal is that the, these funds will seed a community effort and that there'll be broad-based support from many funders that will meet our current community need.
Thank you, Allison. I was just curious with regard to, or simply beyond approval of this resolution, what role, if any, do the supervisors play? It sounds like we really play no role other than the general fiduciary oversight we have for county budget. Is that a fair statement?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Supervisors, Schofield, do you have any other final comments or questions?
I'm good, Chair Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. How about Supervisor Hook? Any final comments or questions?
Supervisor Hook, District Four. The one thing I would say is, as we develop this foundation, I think it'll just be important who sits on that committee that helps make those recommendations. Richard's talking. We won't be doing that. That's going to be the job of that committee. So I think that, as we may have recommendations, or look how they build that committee, but I feel can, I feel very positive that this is going to be a good thing, and especially with Sierra Business Council involved, and Truckee Foundation, and Kimberly, they have a lot of experience in doing this already, and I'm sure they're going to put together a good team. So thank you all.
Great. Good comment. Thank you. Supervisor Miller, any final comments or questions?
No, nothing, nothing final. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. So unless there's any final comments by Caleb or the team, we are at a point where we are going to take a vote, and who wants to, on this historic item for Nevada County at this critical, difficult time, who would like to propose, to accept this resolution authorizing $100,000 to establish Nevada County Relief Fund to support our local nonprofits and small businesses due to COVID-19? Do I have a motion?
Dan Miller, District Three, so moved.
Dan Miller, moved. Do I have a second?
Sue Hook, District Four, second.
Sue Hook, second. Thank you very much. Can we take a vote?
Yes. Julie Patterson Hunter, Clerk of the Board, District One.
Yeah, District One, Supervisor Hall, yes.
District Two.
Supervisor Schofield, yes.
District Three.
Dan Miller, District Three, yes.
District Four.
Sue Hook, District Four, yes.
District Five.
Richard Anderson, District Five, yes.
Fabulous. The resolution has been adopted. Let me thank once again Caleb and Allison and all our guests, Stacy, Kimberly, Steve, Jennifer, and everyone who's worked on this so hard. Thank you so much for being here to make this presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Board.
Okay. At this time, we're ready to move on to our consent calendar. Do my colleagues or do staff have any item they want to pull? Hearing none. Let's move forward with the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to adopt the consent calendar?
District Five, Richard Anderson, so moved.
District Two, Supervisor Schofield, second.
District, Supervisor Anderson first, Supervisor Schofield second. Can we move to a vote?
Yes. Julie Patterson Hunter, Clerk of the Board, District One.
District One, Supervisor Hall, yes.
District Two.
District Two, Supervisor Schofield, yes.
District Three.
Dan Miller, District Three, yes.